Couldn't have called to order the March 22, 2023 regular meeting of the Hastings School District. I've asked Treasurer Davis, we have Vice Chair Mom joining us virtually. And as a result of that, all votes will be done with a roll call vote to assure that it's clear to the public whose votes are coming from where. So I've asked Treasurer Davis to lead our roll call votes until Director Bysel is able to join us. Can we please start with attendance?
Absolutely. Chair Hadeen. Vice Chair Mom.
Present.
Becky Bysel's not here yet. Treasurer Davis present. Director Tate.
Here.
Director Zuzik.
Present.
Thank you. We'll make note. Director Bysel will join us. My understanding is she's coming from a previous engagement, but intends to come.
Yes, and Director Dresley will be absent.
And Director Dresley is absent.
Correct.
We anticipate she will be absent for the entirety of tonight's meeting. Would everybody please stand if they are able, remove your cap, and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would accept a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
So move Davis.
Second, Zuzik.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we take a roll call vote to see who's in favor?
Absolutely. Chair Hadeen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mom.
Yes.
Treasurer Davis, yes. Director Tate.
Yes.
Director Zuzik.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda is unanimous. Next, I would accept a motion and a second. If I did that, to approve the minutes from the March 1, 2023 regular board meeting and the March 8, 2023 special board meeting. These minutes are attached in board book. Would entertain a motion.
Second Davis.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes. Chair Hadeen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mom.
Yes.
Treasurer Davis, yes. Director Tate.
Yes.
Director Zuzik.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome all those in attendance. We have, I'm gonna say 25 people in attendance in the room. We have some special guests who I believe will be recognized shortly. And I also would like to send out a special welcome to those listening and watching on HCTV. We're fortunate to have that unique partnership that allows our board meetings to be made available that way. Thank you. Next, I would like to ask Superintendent McDowell to share with us announcements and recognitions.
Thank you. Tonight, we have special guests due to our partnership with the YMCA with youth in government. And so at this time, they want to introduce themselves as that isn't a surprise to me, but we're gonna bring up Derek Fairbanks and Jim Hansen and Amy Rowan to come to the presentation table along with some very awesome students and talk to us about the great things that youth in government has been doing and representing the Hastings School District phenomenally.
All right. Well, thank you for having us. My name is Jim Hansen and Director of Hastings Youth and Government. And we, yes, we're very proud of our club, and so we're here to highlight just what we do and especially honor these kids who won some awards this year. So on the board, we have some experience with youth in government. Director Davis, of course, was an advisor for many years. And Mrs. Hadeen had a child in the Model UN portion, and of course, Mr. Zuzik was a champion of the program while he was there as our principal. So we appreciate the support. But for everybody listening, Youth and Government is our 25th year. We really didn't make a big deal out of that, but we've been around for a while. We're the largest academic club in Hastings. Our participation rates are high, over 100 pre-COVID. We're building back since COVID, and our middle school numbers are strong, so that's kind of where our base grows from. What we intend to do each year is to, so Youth and Government is an umbrella for two programs. One is called Model Assembly, which we go up to the state Capitol complex and simulate the three branches of government. So the kids can be in the legislative program. They're expected to come with bills that they try to pass through committee and through the two houses and hopefully get signed by the governor. So there's good debate going on there. The executive branch is run by an elected student governor who has a cabinet that is appointed and helps run the show. This is a student-led program. The adults are in the background to guide. And then the third branch, of course, is the courts. Ninth and 10th grade, we have district courts and trial courts and an appeals court. And then 11th, 12th grade, they do Supreme Court cases where they prepare briefs and also do judicial review on the bills that are passed. So it's pretty involved. It's nonpartisan. I want to say there's no adult that I've ever noticed that who has pushed an agenda. That's on the kids to come in with their beliefs, and we focus on process. They learn parliamentary procedure, as you guys live out every meeting. We focus on respectful conversations. It's very pragmatic, and it's fun. And the kids, it's just awesome to watch them use all their learning as they go back and forth, compromise, stand up for what they believe in. And so it's really quite impressive. As also part of that, there's lobbyists, and there's no quid pro quo, by the way, going on that we know of. And there's also a media function for some kids to be part of, broadcast and digital and print media. So it's really quite involved statewide, and so there's about 1,600 kids, and we're the Hastings delegation as part of that. Then the second program we do is Model UN, which is our conferences this next weekend. Again, kids would then choose different countries to represent and as they tackle world problems. And it's a three-day conference. The Model Assembly is a four-day conference. So it's tons of fun. I didn't do this this year, but you guys are invited every year to do what's called a VIP tour to see the kids in action. So we're very, very proud of what they do at Youth and Government. I just have one ask. This is for all the clubs, for the board to continue to support our clubs and activities. We have a wide variety of clubs and activities for kids to be curious and to connect to all their interests. So we count on your support for that, and we thank you for that. So I'm gonna hand it over to Amy, because we do have this important partnership with the YMCA.
Hello, everyone. I'm Amy from the Y. I have been lucky enough to be one of those adults in the background for the last lot of years here with the Youth and Government. I think this, I'm going into, I think it's my 11th. We get gifts when we do so many conferences, and I got my 10-year blanket last year, so that's how I'm tracking it. My job with the Y is to do a lot of the boring but important stuff. So I get to support with registrations. We do a lot with figuring out where people should be. We open our spaces to have meetings there if we need to at the Y. And then another big piece of what I do is like the financial assistance piece. So we work on what scholarships might be needed and how we can utilize our Y dollars that people have given to give back to the programs and the young people in them. So it's really, really just an incredible program to be a part of. It doesn't actually fall to me anymore, but I find such joy and such excitement to go to these conferences. So I don't get to stand alongside Jim and Derek as much anymore, but it's more just I go to the conference and I get to support the young people there. So if there's any questions about how the Y is involved further, just let me know.
Okay, we're gonna yield our time over to Mr. Fairbanks.
Great. Yeah, well, hi. As I said, I'm Derek Fairbanks. I teach at the high school. I'm the high school advisor for Youth and Government. So I kind of mediate with the high school students, and we help out there and run things from the high school perspective and what have you. But I want to just, I guess, I'm gonna introduce these guys and let you know why these are the ones that are here today in just a minute. But at the end of every Model Assembly, we had what's called closing ceremonies. And at closing ceremonies, what they do is we bring in all the delegates, and we kind of talk about the weekend and all the great things that happened. And then they present awards to students for outstanding roles that they played or different things that they've done. And so these four students behind me have all won awards or have been elected to a position for next year, so have been chosen by their peers. And so I'm gonna introduce them one at a time, let them kind of talk about what their role was and what YIG has meant to them. But our first one is Kate Nowak. She is an eighth grader, and she won Outstanding Delegate in Leadership Corps this last year.
So as an eighth grader, we are all in leadership courses, and throughout the weekend, we get to learn about all the three branches of government. And we get to meet people all over, from the legislative branch, media, everybody that's working. We get to meet the candidates, and then throughout the weekend, we get to create a mock bill. We get to present it, and we learn lots. And at the very end, everybody in the group can vote for their favorite person in there based off of their public speaking and their bill. And we have a lot of fun together.
May I ask, what bill were you involved with?
I made a bill. It was intended to help preserve priority in Minnesota.
Any other questions for Kate?
I give my time to Kate.
Yeah, our next student is Gabe Peterson. He's a ninth grader, and he was involved in the Smith Senate at Youth and Government. So he was part of the legislative branch for the ninth and 10th graders. And at the closing ceremonies, he won the Outstanding Member of Smith Senate, which is pretty impressive, so.
So hi, I'm Gabe, and so I'm a member of Smith Senate, which is one of the Houses of the Legislature. And the Outstanding Member of Smith Senate Award is voted on by the members of Smith Senate and goes to whoever they think is the best debater, the best billmaker, and the overall most effective delegate within Smith Senate. And yeah, I mean, YIG for me, I've loved because it's a space where I can debate with people respectfully, and I feel like it's a great educational opportunity. And I think it's proven to bring kids more into the line of government.
So I know that YIG has been notably impacted the last few years by COVID and the ability to come together. How did you choose to be a participant, and such an active participant as a ninth grader, given that gap that probably existed during your middle school time?
Yeah, so I actually came at the perfect time. So for me, the year that YIG was completely online was in seventh grade, which YIG starts at eighth grade. So luckily for me, the first year that I joined YIG, the first possible year, was the year where we just wore masks and did not have to do it online.
Are you anticipating, are you gonna participate in Model UN?
Yes.
Which country, Gabe?
I'm gonna be Botswana.
Good for Botswana.
No further question?
All right, our third person is another ninth grader, Jen Banky. She was in the judicial branch this year. And what's really cool is every year they have elections for different positions, and she got elected as a judge for a trial court next year, right?
Yes.
Trial court next year.
Sorry. So this was my first year at YIG, and so trial courts is like a lot smaller of like an area. It's a lot smaller in general than legislature. And so we had like a pretty small group, and we just fought a case that we had worked on like for the past couple of months. And it was really fun, just like stepping back from who I was typically with and like getting to like debate with new kids that I like never met before. And it was a really good learning experience and like a great learning curve to be with people who challenged me and people who were a lot different than what I had like experienced before. And then for the election process, I didn't know I was gonna run to be elected until like two days before. So I had to write a speech in like the middle of the night and like prepare questions and prepare answers. And then I ran against one other kid, and I won by about 9%. So it was a close margin, but I made it. Yes. And I am also participating in Model UN as Botswana with Gabe.
Did you have, do you have the opportunity to choose the judicial branch or the legislative branch? When is that? When you register?
When you register, you have the option for pretty much anything.
Okay, what was appealing to you about the judicial choice?
One of my friends who, one of my friends wanted to do courts, and you need a partner to do it, so I was like, kind of just piggybacked, honestly.
Yay, peer pressure. Love it.
All right, and our last, our last student is our wily veteran, Alyssa Nestingen. She's a senior this year. And it was pretty cool this year for Alyssa. She's been, I think, in judicial branch most of your YIG career, right? So she was again this year in the Supreme Court, right?
Yes.
And, but she, at those closing ceremonies, I think we were all kind of shocked when they made this announcement, but there was a new award. It's the Student Service Leadership.
Servant.
Servant Leadership. God, I practiced it six times. Servant Leadership Award. It's a new, it's a new award, but essentially they take everyone in Youth and Government, and it's who most embodied kind of Youth and Government and its dedication and kind of put forth the most effort. And so out of the 1,500 or so kids, she got elected.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Alyssa Nestingen, and this past January, I received the Student Leadership Award at my last Youth and Government conference. Throughout the years, I've been an attorney, tried my luck in legislature, solidified my love for courts as a district court judge, and then was a Supreme Court Justice this year. As someone looking to pursue a career in government, specifically law one day, Youth and Government has provided me with opportunities like no other organization. It has allowed me to expand my horizons by participating in Model United Nations, a national judicial competition, the CYV Program Development Committee, the YIG 75th Anniversary, and the Emerging Leaders Reception. The connections I have built and knowledge I have acquired throughout the years have been invaluable. Mr. Hansen, Mr. Fairbanks, and Amy have done a fantastic job of running this program and supporting each delegate in order to ensure the best experience possible. I'm incredibly grateful for this award that I received and hope that it can not only go to show the work that I have put into YIG, but the immense experience and character that it has instilled in me.
So I'm gonna ask the question that all adults ask seniors.
Yes.
You should have anticipated it, which is what's next for you? What do you anticipate?
Well, I'll be, I'm not sure quite yet where I'll be going to school. I'm still waiting on some decisions. I've been accepted to a few of my schools, but they're not my top ones yet, so I'm waiting. But I'll be pursuing a four-year degree in political science and then going on to law school.
Ms. Mom?
Yeah, hi. I'm Vice Chair Mom. I apologize for not being there in person. Hopefully you can hear me okay. I'm actually at the Judge Advocate General School of Law right now in Charlottesville, Virginia. So it is, hearing all of this, it's like very near and dear to my heart, especially judicial branch. I'm a little biased about that. If you ever want to know how, you know, the military works with the government and the Supreme Court and all the different aspects of law, I would love to have a conversation with you.
Well, I would love to learn more about that.
Thank you so much for everything that you're doing and for all the youth out there. This is such a great program because it is, it's so important as adults that, you know, whatever you decide to do, your community, the government is gonna be a part of who you are. Democracy is gonna be a part of who you are in your choice to serve and to be a part of Youth and Government. And the Model UN just speaks volumes about your character. So thank you so much. And thank you to the adults for putting this together and fostering this environment of success.
Thank you. I completely agree. I think without this organization, I wouldn't have been able to come as far as I have and participate in the things that I have. I yield my time to the chair.
That's all we got. Nope. Thank you. Thank you, guys. We're in good hands, and I will say I'm not sure that I've ever seen Vice Chair Mom with that big a smile on her face during a presentation at a school board meeting. That is, that is right up there, near and dear to her heart. All right, thank you very much for your time, and thank you for spending, sharing your backgrounds with us. We really appreciate it. At this time, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is a listening session summary. I don't, will that be Director Tate? Thank you.
So tonight, we had five community members come to speak to us. It was Director Zuzik and myself, actually six, sorry. The first was a pair. We had three, I should say four, people come and speak in favor of moving public comments during the meeting. This is regarding Policy 206, which we're discussing in a first read tonight. They want the, the public comment to be during the recorded and televised session, section of the agenda. We had one person speak to us in favor of the current proposal with having the comments, public comments before the meeting and not recorded or televised. They did state that they would advise keeping the summary, though, if we did that. And then we had one person asking if we could provide a status of the strike and the negotiations. So I'll go into some of, I took a whole bunch of notes. I want to try to do their, do them justice on what they stated. The first pair basically said that, for instance, one woman said that, you know, so her mom, which is elderly, would like to be able to review the meetings at her home and would like to have her have the opportunity to hear and see the public comments that are being brought forward. They believe that this would be more transparent and be able to allow a lot of folks who can't be here to allow them to be able to review the meetings afterwards. There was also a comment about ensuring that there's free speech, and it's important as a democracy to be able to listen and comment and hear others. The second speaker believes that the current proposal of 206 does not go far enough, that parents should be able to speak during the recorded televised session, that this current revision actually goes backwards because it is not transparent enough, that a summary is not sufficient. And it's better to be able to address the full board with the full commentary and have the public hear it. She stated that she doesn't believe that emails are transparent enough. And again, the summary is okay, but not thorough enough, and that all the parents and taxpayers are here for the kids and deserve a right to be heard by everyone. The third person we had, or I should say fourth, stated that she has concerns about opening up comments during the meeting because there is so much civil discourse and animosity currently, and believes that we could possibly be opening up our meetings to be ultimately shouting matches. She doesn't see the benefit of having it in the meeting because there are other ways of contacting board members. And again, she said that she would advise that, yes, we would, we should keep the summary during the meeting, however. And she said that she sees the downsides as being much bigger than the upsides. The fifth person who came, he brought a book called Democracy in America and stated that the right for public to comment in, towards government officials is the foundation of a liberal democracy. It's the right of the people to speak to their government officials and the people's right to also hold elected officials accountable. Feels that the policies that are currently in place have been put in place for over the last year are actually wrong because there should have been open to public comment prior to our voting. The sixth person was the person asking for an update on the strike, and the only information that we were able to provide her was that there was a meeting that was supposed to happen today, and we don't have any other information than that. So did I miss anything?
No, you've done a tremendous job.
Okay, that's it.
Just for purposes of me understanding the counting, with the summary that you stated first, that was two people speaking together? Okay, I was just, okay, thank you. I was just getting lost in the number counts. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for the pause. I like to add the listening session summary to my board book personal notes that I, that they're available for reference. And should there ever be a request, it's a summary of what I understood the listening session to be. At this time, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, item seven, Reports and Discussions, and we'll start with Superintendent McDowell.
Thank you. For tonight's superintendent update, I thought I'd talk about two things, just to keep everybody updated, particularly the public. The first is with regard to our bond dollars and projects, and that's on our agenda. The last several meetings, the board has discussed where we are. And right now, we have about $758,000 left in bond money. However, there are several projects that are in process right now or are just finishing up. And there's about half of those projects that if they fall in line, like all the other projects have, will have some contingency dollars left out of there. Because that's one thing you'll remember, we talked about a lot, is we've done really well with how our projects have been bid. And so we've come in under budget or at budget on several of them. So we anticipate there being some additional contingency dollars. That was one of the conversations at the last work session and meeting that we were talking about, based on the conversation the board was having with regard to monument signs and things like that. And one of the topics that came up is, you know, if we're looking at the monument signs with bond dollars, is there other stuff or what other stuff is there? And so a couple of things that we went back and dug into, and then things that we believe are on the horizon that I just wanted to share as things for us to start that conversation. The first is, some people might be aware that our lease with the National Guard Armory has ended. And that is significant because the National Guard Armory houses our gymnastics team. And that is the one place, believe it or not, in Hastings, and Hastings proper, that has a space large enough to house the gymnastics space. And what people typically don't understand with gymnastics is that the equipment for gymnastics is not something that can be taken gymnastics is not something that can be taken down and put up every day. The gymnastics floor itself is about a 45 by 45 floor. It takes six people about two and a half hours to put up and two and a half hours to take back down. And so when you're looking for a gymnastics space, it's a space where that floor has to stay down for the length of the season. So losing the armory was a big, big thing for us. So that put us into a, a spot of where might we house gymnastics? The best temporary solution we have right now is looking at one of the middle school gym spaces for this, the time that gymnastics happens. And in order to do that, that's going to take probably some bond dollars because, as you can imagine, if we put the floor down and we put the bars up and we put things up during the school day, we're going to need to protect that space from all the other stuff that's going on. So there's some temper, temporary fixtures and facility things that we'll probably have to do. So that's something that we could probably use a combination of LTFM dollars and a bond dollars to figure out a solution in the short term. There are some potential longer-term solutions, but it's too early to even speculate on whether they're viable or not. So this would at least get us through next year, and so we're working that out with the middle school FIAE department, sports department. You can imagine all of the different ideas and concerns that arise with something that's going to take up this amount of space for a four-month period of time. However, that is, that is something that, that we're looking at. At the high school, one of the things that was recommended that has not been put in at the lower entrance, so the stu, the student entrance, would be those bollards in front of the doors down there. Those are the, those are the concrete posts that you see out front of Target or one of the bigger spaces to prevent a car from coming into that giant glass entrance. So that is something that, as a board, probably, probably could consider spending some money on doing that from a safety standpoint. That's also something that could probably be worked in with a combination of some other capital dollars and things like that, but it's an idea. We do know that for our swim team, you know, swimming is another sport that's huge in Hastings, and our pool gets used a lot. There are some updates that could be done to the pool, particularly with the filtering system, the heating system, some bigger things, that this might be an opportunity, rather than waiting, that we maybe want to do something like that now and look into what that might be. This space, the board talked about this space, and so one of the things that we talked about was, you know, does, does the board move to, to the opposite end and kind of flip-flop? And as we talked about that, what we, what we recalled is the media center is actually on the docket to get its floor replaced, the carpeting replaced. Maybe this is a good time to consider, do we want to remodel the media center? Do we want to work with the media center staff and update things here and turn that into more of a, a project that would be even more beneficial to the kids in this space and how we would retool some things? So that's, that's something that, that would be out there. We have some smaller projects at Tilden. We are, we are busting at the seams at Tilden with early childhood and early childhood special ed. That's put us in a position of how can we reconfigure spaces? And so there's going to come down the line here, some requests for temporary walls being removed, permanent walls being put in, dividing classrooms, things like that. So that is another option of where we could be spending some, some bond dollars. We have, as part of the nature preserve, that donated land, the Tekla land that was donated, one of the things out there is while the land is great, there is currently not a place for parking. And so when our students go out there, everybody has to park alongside the dirt road, and that dirt road is a, if you've driven there, it's a typical single car each side, no shoulder dirt road. And so what's left is not a very good passing and I would say safe position. So putting in a parking area there, a gravel parking area, that would be something to consider for students. And then last but not least, while I know we had a, a really large project with Todd Field with the bond, as people in, in the city know, there's a giant project with Highway 61 coming through that's going to impact Todd Field. The biggest impact for the school district is going to be the retaining wall along Highway 61. We anticipate that there's probably going to be an ask from the city and the Department of Transportation to help with what that retaining wall looks like. This might be something where we maybe, it might be wise to set aside some money, even though that that's not coming until 2026, to set aside some money so that we have a base to work from when that ask comes in. The other thing at Todd Field that's going to happen because of Highway 61 and 55 is we have our, our marquee sign there, electronic marquee sign. That's going to have to be moved. My guess is with the age of that marquee sign, it's either going to be, replace it with something new or just not do it at all because it, those signs aren't just pick up and move to someplace else. There's going to be more to it than that. And the last piece related to Todd Field, you'll remember, three years ago, we had a car that did a jump over Todd Field on the 30-yard line, and since then, we've held and blocked off those bleacher seats because of, back to the Highway 6155 project. We didn't want to invest any money into that until we knew what was going to happen for fear that we'd invest the dollars, Department of Transportation would come through and do something different, and then it'd get all torn up. So that would be another thing that the board could consider spending some, or putting some money away for when that project comes in and what we're going to do with, with those two bleacher sections of the visitor section. So that's kind of an update, again, for the board and for the public of where we are because of just where the conversation went. Is there possible other stuff in addition to? Yeah, there is. And it's, there's, there's quite a bit out there for the board to, to, I think, wrestle with, and I'll duplicate this in my weekly update with the board so that you've got it kind of more in detail in writing of what, what we've been talking about, but yeah, I'll leave it at that before I go into referendum if there's questions or comments.
I, I'll just extend the conversation and then open it to questions, if that's okay. Dr. McDowell and I had a chance to talk about this briefly a few days ago because I had, the coming out of the work session where we discussed this, this space, not the monument science space, but when we discussed this space, I'm reasonably certain, or at least I typed up, that we would talk about it in June, that we'd sit down, look at contingency dollars and make a, look at the list of projects and make a prioritized list. Upon reflection, that feels like too long because the best time, as everybody knows, to do capital projects, especially things where you're talking about inside the building space, is to do it when students are not in the building. So I, right now, if you were to look at the board calendar and our shared drive, I've moved that discussion to our April work session, the early April work session, and at that time, I think we'll have, be able to get an extension of this convers, we'll actually be able to have this conversation as a group and maybe we'll have some, I hesitate to use the word cost estimates, but some budgetary estimates for those projects that will allow us as a board to, to make some prioritized decisions on those big scale, bigger scale projects that are, that are in the wings.
Are there any limits on how long funds can be held in the bond? Thanks.
I'll let Jen give you the information on that.
So the funds would be eligible for arbitrage and based on current interest rates. We haven't got to that, but we did reach out to Ellers and they're going to perform another analysis on the funds, and then we'll find out for sure.
Director Davis?
Just one point of clarification and a quick question. So in terms of any refurb of the media center, is it my understanding that that's supported by Principal Kovach and the administration here? That's supported to do that? That's good to know. And the second question is, in terms of the, the potential of moving gymnastics in the middle school space, are you talking about just, just out of curiosity, so people are aware, is it just like the north gym? Is it north and middle? Is it all of it? You know, how, how much of that gym are we talking about?
Yep. So right now, what we're having our architects look at is can we fit the gymnastics needs into one half of the most south gym of the media center? That way, we're trying to figure out how can we do it and at least maintain a teaching space for FIAE on half of that wall, on half of that gym. And, and that's, it, it's really, at this point, we're a spot where it's the best of the worst options, but we haven't committed necessarily to anything. We're just trying to figure out a solution, but we're trying to minimize that impact is what we're trying to do.
I just want to be clear, so the armory has no interest in extending this at all, so it's done. Is that correct?
So the, the issue with the armory is, if I understand the, the trajectory of events, the Red Wing Armory has shut down and that group was moved to the Hastings, and so now there's not enough available open space time to have all of it take place with, if I understand it, with two groups there now.
One other question. What roughly, what, what was our lease with the armory? What was the cost of that? Any idea? You can follow up later, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like we might get that number yet tonight, although to me, follow up later means like I'll send you an email, but I don't believe that's what, I don't believe that's what it means to Director Subert. So, so we may add that.
So while she's looking that up, I do want to remind everyone that, so the dollars that I'm talking about are dollars that are currently sitting there, not assigned to anything. So this is not an in lieu of some other project. This is on top of what we've already got in the works, already board approved, already accounted for dollars. I'm going to continue on then with, I wanted to update just a little bit on referendum because we need to probably be talking about that every meeting, right? So I just have three quick updates with referendum and timeline. So next week at the work session is when we have slated, well, I should back up. People will remember that we had our communications strategy person talk to the board at the last business meeting to try and give an overview of what does, how does communications run parallel to a referendum piece and what's, what's in play. Then what happens next is we have, on the 29th, we will be giving the board what we're calling an assumptions update on our budget so that the board has some really good working baseline knowledge, given what we know to be at this point with things like legislative action, our best guess on where do we fall and, and revenue sources, our expenditures. You'll remember at the last meeting, I gave the class size report. So we kind of are putting all these pieces together now so that as a board, we're going to get to the spot where you're going to be able to have that conversation and say, okay, if this is what we know, if this is what we know, if this is what we expect. And what will happen on the 29th is we will have our secondary teams here to present where they are with their program review and what those two buildings are seeing as their priorities, short term and long term. Because that, those, as you can imagine, are always going to have a financial, there's going to be a financial piece to what a high school team says, here's what we think we should be doing in two years, five years, 10 years. All of that should come together and in play for the board to say, well, here's what we should be looking at for this referendum, here's what we should be looking at in, in addition, here's what we should be looking at down the road. So that's the idea and the progression of these presentations. We're then also working to finalize the follow-up survey that goes out to, so in April, May, you'll remember our Jeff Deller last, last meeting, talking about our, our next survey that goes out to the community. So that's that official survey that goes out to a percentage of the community like it did last year, that gives you as the board an idea of where's the community at, that atmospheric survey of everything from how's the school district doing to here's what we feel about our current taxes, all of that stuff. So you'll have that information for the May work session in addition to the past one. And then finally, what we'll be doing here in the next week or so, working, we'll be reaching out to our community engagement board members as well as our key communicators list of people and working to schedule a meeting in mid-April. Because again, if you remember what Jeff Ellers had presented to you, we'll be at that point about ready to help people in the community start understanding what's happening and why, who do we need to be communicating with to let them know the facts, and what are the boundaries of what you can do and can't do and, and all of that stuff? So that's, that's the trajectory of what's next short term. So give people an idea of what's going to be, what's going to be happening because you don't just put a referendum question out there or the board doesn't just make a decision. There's a lot of stuff that's got to go in to the mix, just to have all seven of you have a quality conversation about what direction do you want to go.
Are there any questions at this time? Okay. Thank you very much for that presentation, and we'll piggyback on the point that we will talk about referendum at every meeting. We'll talk about it at every business meeting, we'll talk about it at every work session. It's quite likely that we'll even talk about it at meetings that are associated with superintendent selection because this is all a component, this is the primary component of what's facing our district and the, and the work, the most important work of our board at hand. Hearing no further questions for that conversation and discussion, I'd like to ask Director Subert to share with us the Building Construction Fund project update. And for those who cannot see this attachment on the screen, it is available in Board Book.
Okay, I can respond to the gymnastics lease real quick first. So it is $2,720. That's what the lease amount was for the 2022 time period. Okay, so then as far as the bond fund, Dr. McDowell kind of already explained it, but just a reminder that those are monies from the voter-approved bonds. They can only be used for school renovations and improvements. Just a few updates since last month, the district-wide monument project was moved to in-process along with the additional funds transferred into that project. And then the current available funds right now is about $758,000, but there are many projects that are in that in-process kind of category that are very close to closeout. So we are really prioritizing trying to get that final paperwork on those projects so we can close those projects out.
Are there any questions for Director Subert? Thank you. I'm going to turn the microphone over to myself to give a 917 update, which I missed at the last meeting, I'm sorry, so that's why there's two board reports attached. I'm not going to speak to the entirety of the board reports. These are what's provided by the Executive Director of Student Services at our board meetings for updates. Couple of things I wanted to highlight, 917 lives their values every single day. They speak about their values every single day. We speak about them numerous times in the course of a board meeting, and you can see it in these reports where our values of collaboration, empathy, they kind of rolls down the list, and that is the structure. That is the structure that they use to make their presentation, and it's, and it, I believe, has led to a really clear alignment and honestly has made developing the superintendent goals and evaluating performance just really straightforward. Just, it is really common piece. So I just, and in fact, on 917 presented at the MSBA conference, and I believe they presented at a couple of other conferences about the intentional choices made for this alignment. So it's just a, it's a reflection. They have, the 917 district has had some success on hiring pairs. They've, they're using a variety of methods. They've used participation in job fairs and, you know, like Farmington, I don't know what they had, Tiger Days or something, it was like a community midwinter event. They do drop-in days where people can just walk right up and they have staff available to take applications, assist people with applications, and they're doing some contracted services. Even so, it is still anticipated that some of the services currently provided by 917 are going to be reduced in the 24, 25 school year. They provide some services at the Level 3 support that are primarily used by Lakeville and Farmington, while most of the other districts provide those Level 3 services through their own staffing, and it's anticipated that 917 is, is going to focus their efforts on the higher levels of, of need and service. That conversation is continuing. It has an impact to Hastings students. It's not a primary impact to Hastings. It's, it's much more of an effect to the Lakeville and Farmington folks in our district. And then the last item- And then the last item that I wanted to speak to is that in our last couple of meetings at 917, a couple of interesting policies have come up, including one that, that I know our policy committee is wrestling with and working through. And that's with regard to Narcan or naloxone being available on-site and amending it into the student medication policy. I will point out, just for reflection, that 917 determined that the model policy by MSBA was not a good fit for them as it is too process-oriented. And we've had that conversation as a board in the past that a number of our policies, as we go through them for review over the last couple of years, MSBA model policies will occasionally have a lot of process in them. So 917 is choosing to use a model policy, use as a model Bloomington's policy, which has been in place for a couple of years. And it's, it's more policy-like. It allows for the development of a procedure book outside of that. So that's just a reference point as our committee works on that and I anticipate we may be seeing that. And then just at the first reading level, like I would consider it pre-first reading level at our last 917 meeting, there was a conversation about developing policies about recording using cell phones, both by students and staff. It's not worked out. There's a lot of statutory limitations because Minnesota would allow somebody, just one party to record. And there's some PELRA, and please, nobody ask me what that acronym stands for. Dr. McDowell will save me if anybody asks that question. Kathy will save me if anybody asks that question. But, but from a, from an employee's perspective. So it's a acknowledged concern and they, they don't have an identified solution at this time. And there was, you know, there was some feedback from the attorneys that they use. They also use RUP, but it was a different representative that had provided feedback. So it's, it's just a thing that, that they're wrestling with and that I suspect has on some level, you know, been in our, in our minds and our conversations. So might be a good place to look for ideas or reach out to representatives there. Are there any questions on 917? All right. Thank you very much. And with that, so hearing no questions, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is a report from our policy committee. My understanding is that Director Zuzik's going to be giving that as Vice Chair Malm is present virtually tonight.
Thank you very much. And you couldn't have left off in a better place. The first policy that we wanted to talk briefly about is that policy on Narcan. And we had already had the same thoughts that you had expressed regarding it being very process-oriented. And our feeling too is that we would add it to 516, which is the policy that's already in place for nursing services. And presently, we have a doctor locally that prescribes an EpiPen for each school site to have one on, onsite. And it's not for any particular student, but it's for any student that may need an EpiPen and maybe not have theirs or have a reaction that appears to be an anaphylactic reaction and the nurse is then authorized to use it. Similarly, we could have a doctor prescribe for each site a Narcan kit or multiple Narcan kits if necessary. And, you know, it's, it's sad to think that we may need to even think about having it at the elementary school level, not because there's elementary kids that are using drugs that could be laced with fentanyl, but it is possible that they could get into somebody else's drugs and ingest them and not know what they're, what they're eating, you know? Eat a, eat a pill and think that it's a piece of candy and then have a horrible, potentially fatal reaction. So that, that's what we're hoping to do. Then another policy that we've started looking at is the policy on naming facilities. For the public's information, the reason that that's of interest is when schools are named after people and the historical circumstances around that person change, then sometimes the school site has been asked to change their name. A close, a nearby example of that is Henry Sibley High School changed to be Two Rivers High School, or Three Rivers High School a couple of years ago for historical reasons. And then Policy 206 and Director Tate did a great job talking about the public comment that we received. So we know that we're going to be talking about that at the work session and looking at the feedback that we got and also just look at the policy meeting, at the policy meeting and incorporating that into our thinking. And then, maybe this is of, of particular importance. 206 is a really big domino for us to have fall. And once that falls, then we're going to have a series of other policies that we would look at in a way that's bundled together. 205, 207, 208, and then 203.2. Those ones are all related to public comment and information for, for the public to interact with the board. So we want to make sure that everything is aligned. But really, the one that needs to be done first is 206. And that's why we're working busily on it. And then the last one is Policy 600. And I know that we're hopefully getting close to that and we will be talking about it later in the meeting this evening. And then if that happens, that also allows us to go into those other policies in the 200s. It's pretty complex. I just want to give a shout out to Ms. Garcia for backing us up and, and doing a lot of work away from the table between meetings to keep us all online in the policy committee. And it's already been said, but Director Dressley, although not here tonight, has done a really fabulous job of organizing all of the work. And there's a queue that's in place right now for our, our work and we're constantly looking at several policies at a time. And really, remember that that's one of the most important things that the school board does is look at policy at, at a governance level.
Thank you, Director Zuzik. Vice Chair Malm, would you care to add anything to that presentation? Or is that an effective summary?
Director Zuzik did a fantastic job of summarizing what we did at our last session. And we have a meeting on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday. And we'll be going over 206, 601, and a few others.
Okay, thank you. And I will point out, I'm just switching over to look at my board calendar. And we have the discussion that's referenced at the end of those summary notes. Discussion at the April work session to be led by the policy committee. That's scheduled for our, for our April work session. I'm sorry, I don't have the date at hand, but that's... The rest of us are trying to do what we can to support that, that ongoing effective work that the policy committee is undertaking. Okay, hearing no comments, let's move to our next item for tonight, which is the first reading of Policy 206, Public Participation in School Board Meetings, Complaints About Persons in School Board Meetings and Data Privacy Considerations. I know that we have received email comments from, I believe we're up to six community members at this time. And I understand we had a partner speak about it today, a third person, fourth person? Is that accurate? We had four people, two spoke together to get under a group of five. Well, actually, yeah, that's five that spoke to, to the comments on that issue. And we had one board member send comments to the policy committee. I'm going to double, I just checked with Chair Malm about that prior, Vice Chair Malm, prior to tonight's meeting to see if there had been feedback on that. Do we have? For those of us who may not have provided written comments, is there's anything additional we'd like to add? That would, that you would like to add to the, to this first reading conversation? We'll start with that first.
Just to be clear, Chair Hady, and what you're looking for right now is just, after review, after having reviewed the document, anything that we'd like to add that you haven't already heard?
That, yes, I'd like to start with that because I think we've heard conversation about, concerns about where the recorded piece of public comment comes. And that'll, that's been the ongoing conversation, I think, to this point. And that'll go back into the policy committee for understanding. I do believe that the policy committee brought this first reading format together forward with consensus from the policy committee. But it's still, it's important to hear from the rest of the board members about, about those things and the community and public.
Yeah, I would just comment that the process is working the way that it's intended. I mean, we bring forward a policy for a first read so that it gets public comment and the board considers it and we hear it back from the board. And, you know, we, we stay, we remain open to public comment about 206. That may be important to say. Remember that the, the purpose of the public comment is to advise the board and make comment to the board, not to make a public comment at the board meeting. And so the issue about recording it ahead of time, that may well make sense and it's something that we'll have to talk about at the, at the board meeting. All right, pardon me, at the policy committee meeting.
Just to piggyback a little back, a little bit on Director Zuzik. I think that since we are receiving emails and we got a great summary from Director Tate tonight. I don't know why we're getting that feedback. We got that great summary for Director Tate this evening. And honestly, in the interest of time, I can email you anything I've got. So I think we're moving in the right direction.
To be clear, I would like any comments that board members have with regard to the first reading of Policy 206 to go to the policy committee, which is, which is, yeah, which is chaired by, yep, Vice Chair Malm. And then the other representatives are Director Zuzik and Director Dressley.
To be clear, I wasn't trying to put more on your plate. I was just, in general, it's fine. I'll give it to Director Malm.
I have a lot of free time, a lot of free time. Director Tate?
I guess I have a bit of a concern with handling it that way because of open meeting law. So I, I thought, well, right, we're, we're only supposed to have three of us having any conversations outside of public meetings. And if we're all sending information via email instead of speaking to it here first, I'm just concerned that that is creating a serial meeting which violates open meeting law. So I think my, I guess my recommendation is that we voice our concerns here so that it's public and then can move on in, in a, in a public committee meeting to address everything that we've stated because we're not supposed to handle business via email.
So I have two things to say to that one. I don't share the same open meeting law concerns because this would be a comment coming from a board member in response to the, to the document, just going to the committee. The committee would have it in, in their conversation and that's going to be held in a public space, saying we've received feedback on these things. That's my concern. If you would feel more comfortable, and honestly, we've had multiple conversations. I would hesitate to estimate how many with regard to this policy. So I feel personally like my position has been well-articulated previously. And, but if, if you would feel more comfortable reading the, the comments that you provided via email, we will accommodate that tonight.
Yes, I would like to do that, just to be certain. So I did share this with Dr. Malm yesterday. And I just wanted to share that I did reach out to board members across the state. I received feedback from nine different districts and seven of the nine currently have their public comment occurring during the televised or recorded portion of their meeting. One has a listening session like we do currently and one holds their comments before or after the meeting, not recorded. And that is due to, they had a member of the public state a student's name in a, in a, in a televised meeting. And so they, they, they removed that. I guess my, my perception is that if we don't have public comments during the meeting, the perception of it is that we are attempting to hide something from the rest of the public. I think it's important in, in governance in general to have transparency and to ensure that the public is aware of issues being brought forward by other members of the public. I think that, I'm also personally not a fan of having the public comments start 15 minutes prior to the meeting just because it's part of the dinner hour. And I just think a six o'clock start time is, is respectful of, of the dinner hour in general. And then I did, I did voice a concern with, and I understand that this is part of the MSBA's model policy in Section 6A8. It states that personal attacks by anyone addressing the school board are unacceptable. Persistence in such remarks by an individual shall terminate that person's privilege to address the school board. I certainly don't encourage personal attacks in any way. However, if we are, if we are talking about personal attacks on school board members, there's a concern regarding First Amendment free speech rights. There's actually a case from 1964 that was, that's a Supreme Court case. It's New York Times versus Sullivan. And in that case, the Supreme Court basically states that, that profound national commitment that, sorry, this nation is founded on the profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues shall be uninhibited, robust and wide open, and that it may well include vehement, caustic and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials. Again, I'm not encouraging that anyone would ever do that. However, saying that it's not allowed conflicts with that, that court case. So I'm just concerned if we're talking about attacks on school board members, I would like to consult legal just to make sure that they don't have that same concern. And if we're talking about personal attacks on, for example, staff, then we should make sure that that's clear in here because of course, that, that is not protected. Or students, yes, students or staff. My other question, I guess, I'm wondering why... So I guess I, we've always handled public hearings where people are invited to come and speak during the meeting and I'm concerned about changing that. We've added section, what is it, 6B stating the procedures identified and Section 4A, 1 through 8 will also be used for comments to the school board during a public hearing unless otherwise determined by statute or by the school board. My concern with this one is that, that the public would be required to sign up the day before in order to participate in the public hearing section of that. And I want to make sure that, that specifically when they're speaking to their taxes and stuff, it's uninhibited in any way. And then the other thing, when we're talking about complaints, that is Section 6C4, this is changing complaints and stating that rather than reaching out to the, the whole board, that the, the person with the complaint would only reach out to the chair. I do have concern with that because the, the chair is not supposed to have any additional powers over school board members and it would appear that we're trying to limit the audience. And therefore, the rest of the board would not necessarily be knowledgeable of, of a complaint that was filed. Let me just make sure I got everything. Sorry. Oh, I did have another question. Section 6A6, it's proposed to remove... I gotta look at it, sorry. Yeah, there's a propose, proposed to remove. Currently it states matters proposed for placement on the agenda which may involve data privacy concerns, which may involve preliminary allegations or which may potentially be libelous or slanderous in nature, shall not be considered in public but shall be processed as determined by the school board in accordance with governing law. And my question is, why are we removing the proposed for placement on the agenda which may involve data privacy concerns? Just wondering what the, what the rationale was for removing that piece? If, and if anybody has it this evening? And if not, that's fine. If you want to discuss it.
Thank you. Director Malm is prepared, we can have that conversation. I think tonight is to give your concerns and questions back to the committee. So, and with being a virtual attendee tonight, that I think, having a discussion at the table tonight would be a little challenging.
That's fine.
Because she's not, not in a place where she can access all her materials.
Okay, sounds good. Sorry, did you have something?
I acknowledge that Vice Chair Malm has her hand up. I don't know if you want to speak at this time or if you want to speak when Director Tate has finished reading her comments into record.
I have one more, that's it. And then the other, my other feedback was, I feel the need to add the rationale as to why people need to sign up the day before the meeting, just to include that. So, that was it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Malm.
Thank you, and I apologize about the background noise too, I'm in the lobby of the hotel. I will try to make this as quick as possible. As I stated in my email back to you, Director Tate, that I am not in a capacity to be able to take a look into your questions within a 24 or 48 hour response. When I get back to Minnesota, I, I will be taking a look at that. But I also did forward your comments to the committee in, in my effort to be accountable to the committee and to the board and, and to ensure that there is transparency about the feedback that we are receiving. And then I asked them to do the same, that if they're receiving individual remarks from, from folks, be it by phone, by text, at the grocery store, or by email, that, that is communicated to the, the Policy Committee. And it's not, I'm not concerned about open meeting law. It, it, this is feedback. This is feedback that we're receiving, we're not making any decisions. So I'm, I'm not concerned about, about that. But I understand that it is a slippery slope and we want to ensure that we are cognizant of that. So the six o'clock start time, I totally understand where, where you're getting that. And for clarification, when we sat down as a committee, we, we thought six o'clock to start the public comment piece and then have our actual meeting start at 6:15. So we put it in there, it's purposely vague with the verbiage saying 15 minutes before the start of our meeting because there are times where we may have to push that up or we may have to push it out, or if we have to change it to another day. So we don't want to limit ourselves and find that we're kind of in a pickle if we say that we're going to start it at 6:00 PM because then we, we have to, we'll have to plan. And there's no flexibility in that case. With, so the intent was to have it, have public comments start at 6:00 PM, our meeting would start at 6:15 PM, to ensure that, you know, we're respectful of that dinner hour and people coming in from work. So the public comment and disparaging remarks, I'm not concerned about board members, public individuals have, they're very good at ensuring they let us know their personal opinions. I'm not concerned about that at all. And being in a public forum, again, when we said, hey, we're going to run for election, we understood that there was a chance that, that, that we would be on the receiving end of, of opinions. The concern that I have is, is exactly Privacy Act, or not Privacy Act, but Data Practices. I want to ensure that, and you even stated it in your email, Director Tate, that one district did have it where it was broadcasted and then they subsequently took it away because comments about, I can't remember off the hand, offhand if it was a teacher or a student, comments, disparaging comments towards an employee, a student, what have you, are highly inappropriate and, and I'm not willing to take that risk. I'm quite risk averse when it comes to protecting the individuals that we are elected to take care of. Although I do understand the concerns about ensuring that the community is hearing from, our community is phenomenal at, at communicating with each other and with us. And so if they, they, they do a really good, I, I get letters in the mail too. So I, I understand that. It, it's a delicate balance. So I think that the committee, we will have a very robust discussion. And, and I don't anticipate that we'll go to approval even after the, the second reading. It, it may be one of those policies, kind of like 601 that we'll see here, that we'll see a few different readings before it's something that we all can appreciate and, and push forward for approval. And then, yeah, the, the public hearings and the, the complaints, that's something that we'll discuss at the Policy Committee meeting. Again, I, I just don't have opportunity to, to respond this week. Pending your questions, that's what I have.
Thank you.
Is there any further input with regard to policy 206 at this time? Director Zuzek is excited to get to the next action item. He's anticipating, that's it, he's anticipating the next, next action item. So hearing none, additional input to the first reading of 206. And being very, very much acknowledging Vice Chair Malm's interest in hearing feedback that we may hear as board members in the community, make sure that that gets passed into and shared with the Policy Committee. I'd appreciate hearing about it. I'm going to not weigh in on it, I'm just going to keep it in our topics register so that we're all knowledgeable about the feedback that we've received. Our next item for discussion tonight is a third reading. I see that my use of additional readings has been left after one trial run. I'm still going to continue to search for a different word there. A third reading of Policy 601, School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals. Will, will you lead the discussion for us on that, Director Zuzek, or will that be Vice Chair Malm?
Vice Chair Malm, if you're okay, I would be fine leading the discussion on 601. Okay. That's, it just, that, that helps us a little bit with the, the challenge of the internet. So 601 really is, it's one of, I would say, one of three or four of the biggest policies that we have. It's the School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals. There was a lot of good conversation that was, that was had at our most recent board meeting. And then that went back and we discussed it with the leadership in the district for, for curriculum, Rachel. And she had some, some good comments and you can see those in the right-hand margin. Again, this is available on Board Book for people at home to see. Those are really hard to see on the screen, I'm sure, just because the, the typing is so small. But a couple of key things that you can see have been reacted to. One is that, the concern about gifted and talented and how is it that we identify them. There is one reference to that group of students and that is in, let's see, Roman numeral four. Number two, the statement, "Assess and identify students for participation in gifted and talented programs and accelerate it and accelerate their instruction." And when we talked about that at the policy meeting, one of the concerns is that so much of what's in this policy is dictated by statute. Like for instance, what do we do with kids that we find are reading below grade level in, in third grade? All of that is very highly scripted and things that we have to do by statute. In gifted and talented services, it's managed differently in different districts. And frankly, it's managed differently over time in many districts, including Hastings. What, the programs that we had and the way that, that students were identified five years ago have changed. And so having that in policy instead of having in procedure ties the hands of our administrators to be able to be nimble and take really exceptional kids and, and accelerate them. And so there isn't a lot of beef about what we're, beef, I mean, content about how we are going to manage students that are accelerated, or worthy of acceleration, I, I should say. Another one that was commented on is the organization of information. And there were some phrases that were in the definitions and the question was, why would we have it in definitions if we're not going to refer to it later in the policy? And Director Carlson, Carson really felt like it was important because these are things that are referenced in other policies. And so then if they're referenced in other policies and those policies reference back to this policy, then it might be important. And that, that was her comment and that's caught in the, in the margin on page 601-2. And then I know that there were some other comments even beyond what I've, what I've commented on and you may want to read that into the record or we would accept feedback from individual board members.
Okay, thank you for that summary, Director Zuzek. Is there, is there additional comments beyond that summary? Director Tate?
Yeah, I'd just like to cover what I had replied.
Yeah.
I guess I, I understand referencing things in the definition, but I respectfully disagree with the practice of having definitions that are not actually, for things that are not actually within the policy. I just think it's the school board's responsibility to have our policies be as concise and as clear as possible. And if we're adding definitions to terms that aren't within that policy, I just feel like it, it opens it up to a bit of confusion. And if they are, if those terms are used in other policies, I absolutely think that they should be defined in those policies. And then, I, I, so Vice Chair Malm had replied regarding my question about experiential learning. She had stated that we would need to have an additional conversation as a board about adding that into our policy. Experiential learning is essentially things that include career exploration through specific courses or through work-based type experiences, job shadowing, mentoring, entrepreneurship, service learning, volunteering, internships, and then other cooperative work experience like youth apprenticeships or employment. And I think that having that, I guess the concern is that we don't currently have a, a formal experiential learning program here at Hastings. But I, I guess my question is, do we need to have a formal program in order to add these types of opportunities for kids? Because I just think that for the kids who aren't going on to college or even those who are, to do some exploration in that area before they have to, for example, pick a major or decide if they're going to technical versus, you know, a four-year college or, or whatnot. I just see that as, as something very valuable that we could add into, into Hastings High School. And I think that we should have a discussion as a board about whether or not we want to try to pursue that at this time with these policies only coming up every three years. I just see that this would be a good time, as good time of any to, to try to, to have that conversation.
Yeah.
And then, I'm trying to remember what the, sorry, I didn't print out the right email. The other suggestion that I had had was just the ordering of some definitions in, in F, we define performance measures, which includes, references world, world's best workforce. And then the definition for world's best workforce is after that. So I just think it would be more sense to define world's best workforce first before you use it in, in the policy itself. And those are, I think those are my major, my major questions or concerns or requests for discussion, I guess.
I, I fully understand what you said and I took some brief notes and we have the email. So that would be easy for us to incorporate into the discussion at the Policy Committee meeting.
So my question, that I don't know who it's directed to, is, this is our third reading of 601. I think the same comments have been brought forward by Director Tate each time and have been responded to by Director Larson and the Policy Committee. I don't know what would be different at this point and would consider moving this policy to an action item. This is to stand aside a conversation about a secondary program with experiential learning. We're in the midst of a innovation team looking at our secondary program review. And that's, that's, does not require the policy to list all potential things that we might add someday. So I would like to hear feedback either from Vice Chair Malm or Policy Committee Member Zuzek about, are we at a place, because we've had this conversation about the same few comments, to move this policy to an action item and see where the board as a whole stands on it. Director Davis?
I've got a note here from Director Malm that she asked me to read because apparently there's someone being very loud in the lobby right now.
Oh wait, he's back.
Hey, Brian.
She's back, she's back.
Director Davis, it's, it's okay.
I was so excited to do it, but go ahead.
Very, very quickly, I, I just wanted to, to say that the experiential learning is, I mean, we have programs out there that would feed into that or be defined as experiential learning. And sorry, I'm really close to my computers that you can hear me loud, the music is loud and there's people all over.
This is what she looks like.
But that, you know, I, I do, I am concerned about, you know, we could ask administration to take a look at this or deep dive into this after the programmatic review. I think it's a really cool opportunity for, for students if we want to look at some formalized program. But I also want to hear about, you know, what, what specifically do we have out there that could fall within this category too? So I, I'm not comfortable necessarily making a decision about experiential learning, but I do want to have a discussion about it further. I, I think the policy as it stands right now, we are going to clean it up at our, it'll go to the Policy Committee on Wednesday to clean it up before it would go to approval. But I, we're comfortable moving it to an action item for approval with the understanding to that next month's product will not have like the strike marks or anything in it. That's all I have.
I concur with Vice Director Malm that, or Vice Chair Malm, that it, it's not inappropriate to bring it back to the Policy Committee for that one consideration. And certainly the, the re, I would call it renumeration, but the reordering of world's best workforce and performance measures, that's something that we can do and it's not substantive. So, and I, I think that we can manage that and have it a, a better, a better policy if we wait until next month.
Okay, so I'm, I'm only having this as a process conversation. So we're at third reading. I would, can we consider taking action on this tonight to bring it back as an action item rather than a fourth reading? Is that, is that the process that we're considering or are we considering it coming back as a fourth reading with movement that night to an action item?
I would anticipate that it would be action item. It would be an action item in the action agenda.
In April.
In April.
Director Tate? Thank you.
I guess my understanding would be if it's coming back with changes, wouldn't we do the reading first with the, with the opportunity to send it to action that night after the reading? Right?
Director Malm?
Yeah, I think what we could do is, is put it to an action item. If there are significant changes to the policy that come out of the, the Policy Committee meeting, I, I guess at next month's meeting, I would just ask to pull that particular, well, to pull 601 from the agenda from, from being voted on and just have it as a fourth read.
Okay, I'm going to make an executive recommendation that I would anticipate that 601 will come back as a fourth reading in April. The only changes that I would anticipate seeing are grammatical cleanups and some reordering of paragraphs. I don't anticipate a substantive change. I am not ruling out a future conversation with regard to experiential learning opportunities in Hastings, but I don't perceive that to be added at this time into 601. But it would come back basically with those nominal changes, but it will come back as a fourth reading. And I will be clear- And I will be clear right now, my expectation at the April board meeting is we will move this from a fourth reading to an action item at that time. Is everybody moderately comfortable with it coming back as a fourth reading? All right, I see general head nodding. So that, are you clear about that, Ms. Garcia? It'll come back as a fourth read, but everybody have your boots on, because we're going to move it to action, I think is very likely. Thank you. I appreciate that somebody appreciates me. Okay, with that, we're going to move into our action item portion of the meeting. I will, I will share that I was not just like on social media previously when I had my phone out, Director Bysel sent me a text, and they have not yet reached the awards portion of her evening. So she was just giving an update, that was at 7:15. Since none of our clocks are correct, I don't know what time it is in the real world right now. But she is thinking about us, she's thinking about us. All right, so we're going to move on to the action items for tonight, and yet again, we will be doing a roll call vote on all items. Our first action tonight, that I would consider a motion and a second, is approval of the consent agenda.
So move, Davis?
Second, Zuzik.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, can we please take a roll call vote?
Of course. Chair Hadeen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mom?
Yes.
Director Bysel not present, Director Davis, yes, Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Zuzik?
Yes.
Thank you.
The consent agenda is approved unanimously. We have an item for individual action. It's been renamed from Boardroom 2.0, which I thought was entertaining, but Boardroom renovations, which aligns with the Bond Project renovations, summary sheet that we're all very, very used to seeing after multiple weeks, multiple months of looking at that. For summary prior to motion, this was an item that was discussed at the work session, work session in March, and it involved, it involves, the discussion tonight, putting aside the potential items brought forward by Superintendent McDowell, involves essentially flipping this room, moving the, realigning the cameras, moving the board table and our support staff table to the other end of the room, and presenting from there, it would allow board members, should they need to take a bio break, to not have to walk through the audience, and it also resolves some, I hesitate to use the terminology, but it's true, some threat assessment of feeling a little bit stuck back in this corner. And then thirdly, my understanding is that if we flip the room, currently the TVs, things are put to the middle, TVs are pushed aside, but remain at this side of the room with all of their cords and their attractive nuisance to middle schoolers who use the room during the day. If the room is flipped, those TVs could be put away in one of the small
Computer labs.
Computer lab spaces, and that attractive nuisance would no longer be an issue at hand. I believe that Superintendent McDowell spoke with Principal Zuzik, excuse me, that was a flash from the past, I'm sorry, Mark, with Principal Kovach, with regard to his feedback. And if you would, we summarized that in the superintendent's presentation, it was generally supportive. Do you have anything to, well, not generally supportive, it was supportive. We have nothing additional to add. The conversation at the work session covered a two-part piece, which was roughly $6,000 to relocate the cameras and maybe some speaker pieces, existing electronics that are in here to relocate them. There was a consideration for an additional $12,000 for a ceiling mounted projector, which would have been a way to get rid of the TVs, but given that the TVs can be put in a secured space during the, during the school day, I don't think that's a concern at all anymore. So at this time, with that as a summary, for folks that may or may not have been able to be in attendance at the work session, I would entertain a motion and a second to...
I would make a motion to approve the boardroom renovations.
Okay. And to be clear, that would be just the second mom, and that, for clarity's sake, that's the small renovation of roughly $6,000 to flip the space and flip the cameras.
Yeah, and just for the public's consideration, what really turned me in this decision is knowing that middle school, for programmatic reasons, is also looking at possibly altering this space. This is just good timing for a great project.
Is there any further discussion? I will point out that, I see, Director Mom, I'm just going to point out that the original allocation for the project, the boardroom renovation, moving us from the small district conference room A to this space, was allocated $100,000 out of the Bond Project, has to be used for capital investments, and at this time, over $36,000 remains in that project fund. This is not taking, this is not new money, and it's not moving another project down the list. It's within the original allocation. Director Mom, would you care to add something?
Thank you. No, I just, I wanted to say that I echo the exact same thing that Director Zuzik said. Initially, my thought was, no, I don't, I don't want to do this. My term is up in nine months. It's minimally impacting me. However, one of the questions that I had asked this last week is, how does everybody else feel? How does this impact the school? How does this impact the district office? How does this impact everybody that's using this space on a daily basis? And the response that we received was that it was supported, that they find this as an opportunity to kind of revamp this space, so that it's better suited for the students and the teachers that use it daily. Thank you.
Is there any additional comment on the motion on the table? Hearing none, can we hear a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Chair Hadeen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mom?
Yes.
Chair Bysel not present, Chair Davis, yes, Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Zuzik?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our final action tonight is a resolution on a coaching non-renewal, and I would entertain at this time a motion and a second to approve the resolution as written, which would mean that the resolution will not be read in full.
I would make that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table from Director Zuzik, second by Director Mom, is there, to approve this resolution as written? Is there any discussion? All right, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Absolutely. Chair Hadeen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mom?
Yes.
Director Bysel not present, Director Davis, yes, Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Zuzik?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, that motion, that resolution passes unanimously, and that is our final action item for tonight. I would ask everybody to take a look at the future meetings. It's gotten a lot longer, partly because Executive Assistant Garcia put every last meeting from now until the foreseeable end of time on this page. And then we do have some special board work sessions coming up, and we have, we have one on Monday, which will be our initial planning meeting for our superintendent's search with a representative from MSBA, who will be here in person. And please bring your calendars to that, and we have every reason to believe that we're going to have to put other meetings on the calendar at that time. And waiting for a Google Doc or waiting for a survey is not going to be the right answer. We're going to have to come to those meeting dates in a timely way and while we're all at the table. All right. Given that, I would entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
So move.
Second, Davis.
Any discussion? All right, we're going to take one last roll call vote tonight.
Sounds good. Chair Hadeen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mom?
Yes.
Director Bysel not present, Director Davis, yes, Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Zuzik?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Travel safely, have a good evening.